Welcome to the Rock and Roll Record. So, twenty-two. No, see you in my, get him over here. No. See, get him over here, read my stuff. No, I did not. There you go.
Yeah, I don't know. Well, it's 6:00 PM and I'll call the July meeting of the Mayor and Council to order. If you'll all stand with me, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, God and the visible with liberty just as for all.
Councilman Bridges, would you do our invocation?
Sure. Please remain standing, please. Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, thank you Father God for this day. Thank you Lord for waking us up this morning in our right minds and in our health and strength to heaven and father. As we go forth through this meeting tonight, Lord God, that you would grant us to do things in decency and in order to glorify thee. These and all of the blessings in your dear son Jesus Christ's name we all do pray and let of your hearts say amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, at this time we'll have citizens' comments. Mr. Tiflett, do we have?
Thank you, Mayor. We had originally received a request from Sheila Redwine to speak, but I don't believe she is here.
Okay, so Ms. Redwine? Okay, all right. Okay, you all have a copy of the minutes of our June meetings. Do I have a motion to adopt those minutes as presented? I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes of our June meetings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. At this time, we'll have comments from our Mayor and Council. We'll start with Councilman Bridges.
Good evening. I just wanted to say, this is my anniversary. I have completed three years and survived the city council. But what I would like to say to my mayor, my council, my attorney, and my city manager, I thank all of you for keeping me on my toes and on my feet when I thought I was by myself. Y'all assured me that it was gonna be all right. Thank you all for your encouragements and your prayers that you was praying for me while I was going through this journey. We survived in the most difficult times during COVID. And I know it was difficult because it was a lot. I had to wear a mask, I couldn't breathe, and I had to wear a mask, I couldn't see either. So, one time I think I lost my glasses and I couldn't read or see. So, I just wanted to say, you know, we don't always agree, but we can agree to disagree. And that's what build a team, that's what make us strong. And I feel like we have a strong community as mayor and council, delivered the message to lead it with sincerity, honesty, and integrity, and most importantly, love. And I just want to tell them thank you. Thank you all for just being here for me because I don't know what I would've done without you guys. And I know there's more people that helped me too, and I want to thank you, and you all know who you are too. And it's just emotional because I didn't think I was gonna make it this long, but thank God I made it, hallelujah! So, I just want y'all to say, just want to say to you guys, thank you, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Jacqueline. It's great to have you on the council. Mr. Edlund?
Jacqueline, we're grateful for you, and we thought you were keeping us on, keeping us on our toes, so you're doing a great job. So much going on here this last month. The Fourth of July Parade, Independence Day was a wonderful occasion here in Carrollton, Georgia with one of the largest parades in the state. Had a lot of fun in it with Carrollton's unofficial mascot, my dog Tater, and throwing candy, and having just had a great time, we're thankful. Very thankful for Terry Lowery, who's not here to hear it, but he does such a great job with, we're blessed to have him in our community and the beautiful music he and his orchestras provide. And hey, Joel's here, I'll say thanks to Joel for, I think we had a real smooth week, and thank you so much, you do a great job.
Well, to start with, Jacqueline, congratulations. You and I came along just about the same time. I got elected in November, and then you came along in July, so we kind of were rookies together. I appreciate what you've brought to this council and your perspective on things, and we really do appreciate that. I too had a great holiday week, and we're blessed to live in a city where people make such an effort to make sure that our whole community has a good time. And I just want to do a shout out to the staff that's participated in all the activities over the weekend. A lot of people work tirelessly on days that we're taking off, that's a full day for them to make those kind of things happen, the parade and the music at the elementary school and fireworks and all that goes on. Somebody else is, you know, toting the load while we're enjoying it, so that's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Waters?
Well, I just want to say too how much I appreciate the efforts of our employees. I mean, it's like Brett said, the police department, the fire department, the street department, and just, we want to also thank the Evening Sartoma Club for putting together parade. It's one that everybody enjoys, and you know, the turnout this year I think was larger than what I remember in the last few years, and you know, it wasn't unbearably hot, so that was a good day. And then the evening festivities, as they've said, you know, the music just fills the air, and it just gives you that great feeling to be able to celebrate the Fourth of July. And I want to thank everybody that contributed to making sure that we all were able to enjoy it. And I want to say too, we just returned from our Georgia Municipal Association meeting, and it was a very good meeting. It was a record attendance for the GMA. There was 2,400 city officials and support staff registered, and that was a record for them. And we learned a lot, and we're gonna try to implement some of the things we've learned, and you know, you never stop learning, you never stop growing, and so I want to say thank you. And Jacqueline, I want to say thank you to you. You've contributed a lot to this council and to the community, and you've worked really hard to make sure that you are always prepared and working with us, and yeah, we don't always all agree, but we can agree to disagree, and most of the time work it out. But anyway, we have a great support staff, and that makes our jobs a lot easier. So, Mr. Brooks, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I too am celebrating my work anniversary this month. It was two years ago that I was hired by the city, and I'm just, it's been a great two years, eighteen months in as a city manager now, and it's been great. We've got great staff, great people, great support staff. Just, I appreciate these guys up here giving me the opportunity and then allowing me to continue to do this job. It's been a great, a great career change for me and transition into this position. And also want to thank these guys. We talk about, and we thank our staff and the folks that do the heavy lift in terms of making sure that we have all the different things in Carrollton that we have, the Fourth of July celebrations and the night markets and the concerts and the performing arts and all the stuff. But I'd just like to thank this council for giving us the resources, giving our staff the resources to be able to do that, which in turn provides great amenities to our community. So, just thankful to be a part of it.
Oh, and I want to mention the night market that was Friday night. If you hadn't had a chance to go to one of the night markets over at Lake Shore Park, we'll have another one the end of this month, is that right? I think sometimes the end of this month. But you can always look on the calendar and see, it's a fun time, and they usually have a band, and there's food trucks, and there's vendors, and it's just a great time for the community to come together, and the kids enjoy playing on the playground. And when all this is finished, and the Lord keeps letting it rain, and the lake fills up, it's gonna be one of the most awesome spots in our city to be able to go out there and enjoy. And we get a lot of positive feedback. I know Chief Richards and I spoke with some, a lady, and she said, "This was one of the best things y'all have ever done." And we want to thank Councilman Ledbetter because he had to go sit on the same picnic tables that he did when he was a boy, so now we have some really nice amenities out there. But anyway, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda items for consideration. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. At this time, we'll have comments from our Mayor and Council. We'll start with Councilman Bridges.
Good evening. I just wanted to say, this is my anniversary. I have completed three years and survived the city council. But what I would like to say to my mayor, my council, my attorney, and my city manager, I thank all of you for keeping me on my toes and on my feet when I thought I was by myself. Y'all assured me that it was gonna be all right. Thank you all for your encouragements and your prayers that you was praying for me while I was going through this journey. We survived in the most difficult times during COVID, and I know it was difficult because it was a lot. I had to wear a mask, I couldn't breathe, and I had to wear a mask, I couldn't see either. So, one time I think I lost my glasses, and I couldn't read or see. So, I just wanted to say, you know, we don't always agree, but we can agree to disagree, and that's what build a team, that's what make us strong. And I feel like we have a strong community as mayor and council, delivered the message to lead it with sincerity, honesty, and integrity, and most importantly, love. And I just want to tell them thank you. Thank you all for just being here for me because I don't know what I would've done without you guys. And I know there's more people that helped me too, and I want to thank you, and you all know who you are too. And it's just emotional because I didn't think I was gonna make it this long, but thank God I made it, hallelujah! So, I just want y'all to say, just want to say to you guys, thank you, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Jacqueline. It's great to have you on the council. Mr. Edlund?
Jacqueline, we're grateful for you, and we thought you were keeping us on, keeping us on our toes, so you're doing a great job. So much going on here this last month. The Fourth of July Parade, Independence Day was a wonderful occasion here in Carrollton, Georgia with one of the largest parades in the state. Had a lot of fun in it with Carrollton's unofficial mascot, my dog Tater, and throwing candy, and having just had a great time, we're thankful. Very thankful for Terry Lowery, who's not here to hear it, but he does such a great job with, we're blessed to have him in our community and the beautiful music he and his orchestra is providing. Hey, Joel's here, I'll say thanks to Joel for, I think we had a real smooth week, and thank you so much, you do a great job.
Well, to start with, Jacqueline, congratulations. You and I came along just about the same time. I got elected in November, and then you came along in July, so we kind of were rookies together. I appreciate what you've brought to this council and your perspective on things, and we really do appreciate that. I too had a great holiday week, and we're blessed to live in a city where people make such an effort to make sure that our whole community has a good time. And I just want to do a shout out to the staff that's participated in all the activities over the weekend. A lot of people work tirelessly on days that we're taking off, that's a full day for them to make those kind of things happen, the parade and the music at the elementary school and fireworks and all that goes on. Somebody else is, you know, toting the load while we're enjoying it, so that's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Waters?
Well, I just want to say too how much I appreciate the efforts of our employees. I mean, it's like Brett said, the police department, the fire department, the street department, and just, we want to also thank the Evening Sartoma Club for putting together parade. It's one that everybody enjoys, and you know, the turnout this year I think was larger than what I remember in the last few years, and you know, it wasn't unbearably hot, so that was a good day. And then the evening festivities, as they've said, you know, the music just fills the air, and it just gives you that great feeling to be able to celebrate the Fourth of July. And I want to thank everybody that contributed to making sure that we all were able to enjoy it. And I want to say too, we just returned from our Georgia Municipal Association meeting, and it was a very good meeting. It was a record attendance for the GMA. There was 2,400 city officials and support staff registered, and that was a record for them. And we learned a lot, and we're gonna try to implement some of the things we've learned, and you know, you never stop learning, you never stop growing, and so I want to say thank you. And Jacqueline, I want to say thank you to you. You've contributed a lot to this council and to the community, and you've worked really hard to make sure that you are always prepared and working with us, and yeah, we don't always all agree, but we can agree to disagree, and most of the time work it out. But anyway, we have a great support staff, and that makes our jobs a lot easier. So, Mr. Brooks, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I too am celebrating my work anniversary this month. It was two years ago that I was hired by the city, and I'm just, it's been a great two years, eighteen months in as a city manager now, and it's been great. We've got great staff, great people, great support staff. Just, I appreciate these guys up here giving me the opportunity and then allowing me to continue to do this job. It's been a great, a great career change for me and transition into this position. And also want to thank these guys. We talk about, and we thank our staff and the folks that do the heavy lift in terms of making sure that we have all the different things in Carrollton that we have, the Fourth of July celebrations and the night markets and the concerts and the performing arts and all the stuff. But I'd just like to thank this council for giving us the resources, giving our staff the resources to be able to do that, which in turn provides great amenities to our community. So, just thankful to be a part of it.
Oh, and I want to mention the night market that was Friday night. If you haven't had a chance to go to one of the night markets over at Lake Shore Park, we'll have another one the end of this month, is that right? I think sometimes the end of this month. But you can always look on the calendar and see, it's a fun time, and they usually have a band, and there's food trucks, and there's vendors, and it's just a great time for the community to come together, and the kids enjoy playing on the playground. And when all this is finished, and the Lord keeps letting it rain, and the lake fills up, it's gonna be one of the most awesome spots in our city to be able to go out there and enjoy. And we get a lot of positive feedback. I know Chief Richards and I spoke with some, a lady, and she said, "This was one of the best things y'all have ever done." And we want to thank Councilman Ledbetter because he had to go sit on the same picnic tables that he did when he was a boy, so now we have some really nice amenities out there. But anyway, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda items for consideration. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the agenda items have been approved. Our first agenda item is an annexation and rezoning request. And I want to read something before we start with this. Ms. Studdard, just one minute. At this time, we'll hear the rezoning request. Since many of you may not have previously attended a public hearing on a rezoning request, I want to quickly review our procedures. No person in attendance shall speak unless formally recognized. Upon rising to speak, each person recognized shall state their name and home address. Speakers must not employ tactics of intimidation, profanity, or threats, or violence in their comments. All comments shall be directed to the mayor and council, not to the petitioner or those in opposition. In accordance with Georgia law, each side, not each individual, is allowed a total of ten minutes of public input. This means that all those speaking in favor of the request have a total of ten minutes, and all those speaking in opposition to the request have a total of ten minutes. Time devoted to the questions and answers that the elected officials may ask should not be counted against any time limitations. Since we do have limited time, please try to avoid restating what others may have already stated. The applicant shall be allowed to speak first in order to present the application. Others may then speak, indicating first their support or opposition to the application. The applicant will then be allowed time for rebuttal. Rebuttal must be limited to points or issue raised by opponents to the application at the hearing. So now you have our guidelines, and we'll let Ms. Studdard bring to the council the request for annexation and rezoning. And we want to thank Councilman Ledbetter because he had to go sit on the same picnic tables that he did when he was a boy. So, now we have some really nice amenities out there. But anyway, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda items for consideration. Have a motion, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the agenda items have been approved. Our first agenda item is an annexation and rezoning request. And I want to read something before we start with this. Ms. Studdard, just one minute. At this time, we'll hear the rezoning request. Since many of you may not have previously attended a public hearing on a rezoning request, I want to quickly review our procedures. No person in attendance shall speak unless formally recognized. Upon rising to speak, each person recognized shall state their name and home address. Speakers must not employ tactics of intimidation, profanity, or threats or violence in their comments. All comments shall be directed to the mayor and council, not to the petitioner or those in opposition. In accordance with Georgia law, each side, not each individual, is allowed a total of 10 minutes of public input. This means that all those speaking in favor of the request have a total of 10 minutes and all those speaking in opposition to the request have a total of 10 minutes. Time devoted to the questions and answers that the elected officials may ask should not be counted against any time limitations. Since we do have limited time, please try to avoid restating what others may have already stated. The applicant shall be allowed to speak first in order to present the application. Others may then speak indicating first their support or opposition to the application. The applicant will then be allowed time for rebuttal. Rebuttal must be limited to points or issue raised by opponents to the application at the hearing. So, now you have our guidelines and we'll let Ms. Studdard bring to the council the request for annexation and rezoning.
The only zoning item you have on your agenda this evening is an annexation and rezoning request for 54.23 acres. Approximately 3.09 acres of R-20 are already in the city. And then the remaining tract is in Carroll County as R-1, which is residential. The request is to annex and rezone the entire 54 acres as a mixed-use plan development. The applicant is proposing a 330-unit apartment complex and an approximately just under 20 acres of commercial. The site plan that was provided in the application shows approximately six out parcels. They did ask as part of the request that the, that there's some flexibility in how those are marketed. If they may combine parcels and market, you know, basically two parcels as one. So, they did ask for some flexibility with that. The planning commission reviewed this request in June and they recommended unanimous approval with the following conditions. That the sidewalk requirement along the Highway 166 bypass be waived. However, the internal sidewalks shall still be installed within the development to promote connectivity, especially pedestrian connectivity between parcels. And then number two, the proposed commercial building shall provide front facades facing the Highway 166 bypass, even though they won't have entrances off of Highway 166. There was an additional condition that was discussed, I think, at the work session relating to the density, I mean, the unit matrix. I think that the applicant was open to putting a 10% limit on the three-bedroom unit matrix. If you do want to include that condition, that would need to be added to the conditions that I just mentioned if you wanted that included as well. Please keep in mind, this is a planned development, so the site plan concept is binding. The written narrative is also binding and as well as the architectural elevations that were provided with the request in your packets is also binding. I do believe the applicant's representative is here to speak.
Brian Hatcher with LBYD Engineers, 880 Montclair Road, Birmingham, Alabama. One of the developers, Greg Power with Imperium Development Partners is also here tonight. The Culpeper's are not here due to a medical issue with Richard. Kind of like she just said, this is a 54-acre parcel at the end of the bypass on Cedar Street. Or at the end of Cedar Street on the bypass. We are proposing 20 acres of commercial, roughly 24 acres of residential. Lots on the commercial, averaging from small out parcels to 10 to 15-acre lots in general. Different uses in the commercial. We're looking at restaurants, grocery, gas station, several different items in there. There are no tenants at this time picked out specifically for those lots, which is why we made the request for some lenience on what those lots really are in the future, depending on how the marketing goes. A little about the apartment multifamily portion in the back. The project currently called The Everly is 330 multifamily units. It's roughly a $73 million project. Our target for this, for this portion of the project, there's young professionals working at the hospital or Southwire. Kind of the unit mix we worked, looking at and have looked at is roughly 55% one-bedroom, 35% two-bedrooms, with a 10% three-bedrooms, as we've mentioned earlier. I assume you guys have probably seen some of the exterior elevations that were presented at the planning commission meeting. They're roughly a mix of board and batten siding, lap siding, brickstone accents and vinyl windows. The interior is more of a high-end apartment home boutique finishes with more of a modern, dynamic setup. The current layout is 11 buildings, three stories, wood framed with gated parking access to go with them. There is professional onsite management planning for this property and a gated community full-time. So, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them as we go.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, anybody have any questions?
Hey, thanks for being here. And it was Mr. Hatcher?
Yes.
Can you tell us about other projects you've done similar to this?
Apartment-specific or?
Yes.
Greg Power, Imperium Development, 13175 Owens Way, Milton, Georgia 3004. So, Imperium Development, we currently have 240 units, very similar to this garden-style apartments in downtown Cartersville called Walker's Ridge. We also have another development called South Davis in La Grange, which is 300 units. You know, as a, as partnerships, we've developed over 12,000 units, about a billion seven in realized investments. Downtown Swanee, downtown Gainesville, the first multifamily deal in Chambly. So, we have a robust experience of developing.
And your company manages all these?
We do, we do.
Wow.
So, we bring in what we think is the best of the best, civil engineers, architects, general contractors. We are the asset managers and then we hire a third-party management company, which provides onsite management and security 24/7.
How long's your company been in business?
Imperium has been involved, this iteration of Imperium has been involved for two years now. The partnership has been around for 22 years. I stepped up to lead two years ago.
Great, congratulations. I ask that because of my concern for, you know, what'll happen to these in 10 years or, you know, somewhere down the road that, you know, we want to be as certain as we can that they'll be managed well 10 years from now as they are today and?
Absolutely. Our investors are institutions, predominantly high net worth insurance companies that roll this into part of their pension fund. And, you know, they want to, they want to see a return. And they're as motivated as anyone to keep them, to keep them looking as new as the day they were built.
Sounds like a great project.
Any other questions? Okay, all right.
If you, if you were successful with the annexation tonight, what's your timetable on, you know, getting started on this project?
From this meeting, we'll go to the county annexation, or de-annexation, I should say. After this meeting, we'll start on civil plans and be in a position to hopefully start construction in Q1. Q4, Q1.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? All right, okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this project?
I'm Row Ayers and I'm not against it, I just got a question. You go up to, you're going out to bypass, you're entering where this proposal is. I got, the first parcel on the right belongs to my Shirley Robson. It's my next-door neighbor, she's confined to the bed. And I'm next. You go up the driveway going to this. I just want to be assured, I've had some problems before with being the septic tank, all the drainage going over on our, my property or some property me and my brother own. But I'd like for all the drains, storm drains and all that to go on out the bypass. Where there's plenty of water there anyway, the ducks and the fish could use that a lot better than I could. So, I'm not, I'm not opposing it. I just want to be assured to have no problem with this development. I just want to be sure that, you know, and there's a lot of rock on that place. That when you come over the line of my property owned to this, right at my corner, it's solid rock. And I think, you know, Mr. Culpeper mentioned, he's not here tonight, he says, "There's going to be a lot of blasting over there." Which I don't, you know, that's just part of the program. I hope you don't get where, you know, it knocks the tea glass out of my hand. It looked like a great development, but I just like the, all the run, all the drainage from the parking lots and the gutters from the apartment. On out the road there where there's plenty of water now. It wouldn't hurt to add a little bit more water into Lake Carroll. You could use it today.
Thank you.
That's, that's my two cents worth, but I appreciate y'all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ayers. Is the, the entrance into that, is where that cut is already now, is that right? Okay, all right. And so, just looking at that property, the natural fall of it is back toward the bypass.
Yeah, and there'll be, there'll be a set of plans for stormwater management that will be approved by our engineers here. And they'll be done by a civil engineer and be approved to, and we'll, wouldn't approve them until we're sure that the water will not be distributed to another, to an adjacent property owner.
Well, if you, if you look at the drawing, the green in the bottom left-hand corner, there's a kind of an odd-shaped circle right there that has stormwater retention or management right there. And so, you know, that's on the bypass end of the property. And, you know, these plans, even though they have some flexibility about, or could have some flexibility about the commercial spaces, you know, the, where the stormwater management is located, you know, should be taken into consideration, you know, as civil plans are developed, so.
Okay. All right, anyone, I think you had some opposition? Okay.
Hi, I'm Dex. Lorenko, hey Coach Brooks. All right, Coach Brooks was my ninth-grade math teacher and then my boss, so. When I taught later at Carrollton High School. Nice to see you. I just wanted to know, I know Carrollton has a higher poverty rate than many other municipalities. And I just wanted to know how this will affect like the local housing market and housing prices. The housing market, I mean, the Housing Department Section 8 vouchers waitlist is closed. I've heard it's backed up like eight years. There's not a lot of low-income housing or housing for people with, even like, I know a couple where one of them's working at Kroger and another one's like growing a garden. And I think they're living in a shed behind their parents' house right now. And this is something that I hear all over the place. I recently got really fortunate to move in with a roommate and I'm paying like $570 a month for just a single room with utilities and a house. But I just want to make sure that we are factoring in how this might affect the minority communities, disabled communities, those that are often not spoken for.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, thank you for your comments. And the housing, to respond to your comment, the housing is something we deal with every day. Whether it, and we've done housing studies and, you know, we're continuously looking for solutions to it. But unfortunately, with the cost of everything now, it's really difficult to build what we call affordable housing. But the governor has done some things this year to help with some of that area. So, hopefully, hopefully, we can keep plugging along until we can, can get some resolution to it. Any other comments? Okay. There you go.
How many wheelchair-accessible ones are you going to bill for handicap accessible like me?
Will the units be, all be handicap accessible? ADA, meet the ADA requirements? I'm sorry. Okay, all right. He's calculating it for you. We'll have you an answer in just a moment. You want to come back to the mic for me?
There'll be 16 ADA units. All units will be fair housing accessible, but as far as ADA units, it'll be 16 units.
16 units will meet the ADA requirements.
Is it 5%?
It is.
Okay, all right.
Is fair, you said fair housing assess, accessible?
All the units will meet fair housing, FHA standards. And then 5% of the units will be ADA.
Fair housing, would that mean affordable? I don't know how to be able to say, I don't know what to ask, but what, explain to me what did that mean?
Fair housing is just a set of equal opportunity guidelines for all, for all applicants that come in. So, we can't, I think that's probably the best way to summarize it.
You couldn't say no firemen can live here, can you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right.
No discrimination to any, anyone, no applicants is effectively what fair housing says.
I've got one more question. I may not have been paying attention when you said something about some of your other developments. Are you doing, some of these other ones are mixed-use also?
They are. Walker's Ridge and Cartersville is very similar where it has four out parcels in front of the multifamily development. And then when you look at, for example, in downtown Gainesville, what we did, we did close to 15,000 square feet of retail that flanked the multifamily. So, well-versed in multi-use. And you guys know Richard and what he's done in Carrollton. And, you know, there's, there's no tenants identified yet because we have to get this annexed and de-annexed. But there's been a lot of great, a lot of great interest.
Good.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Could you, could you come up and ask that question? I didn't hear you.
Sorry, I'm disabled, so I was. I just asked how this will impact our local housing market or how your past projects have impacted local housing markets.
Well, hopefully, it will add more availability. We've had lots of comments and even had some business owners who have said that they don't have housing to bring their young professionals or their workers here. So, as far as the impact, we're going to be adding 330 new available places for people to live.
It's right in line with where our housing study says that we are lacking in terms of housing.
That's what I was looking for, thanks for the data.
Thank you. All right, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the annexation and the rezoning request as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, and we have a tie in this case. I vote and I will vote in favor of the motion, so the motion passes. And we will have the annexation and rezoning request has been granted. All right, thank you. All right, our next item is the fiscal year '23-'24 budget. And that's hard to believe that it's going to be 2024 in a few short months. Mr. Triplet, or Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm just going to go ahead and present, Mr. Triplet presented at our hearing. You know, this is a process that we actually, with this- You know, this is a process that we actually, with this group, started back in January when we were, did our off-site work session up at Banning Mills and talked about a lot of different things and employee retention and and what we can do to take care of our employees as well as our citizens of our community and, you know, offer all the great things that we do, like we've talked about tonight, whether it be the Fourth of July celebrations or the concerts or the night markets and those types of things. So it's been a long process and really proud of of what our department heads have done in terms of putting together a budget. We feel like we've put together one that that does not deviate very much at all from the budget retreat that we went on down in Columbus. They've done a very good job of taking care of our employees in in these unprecedented last couple of years in terms of the inflation and the rising cost of everything, as well as continuing to take care of our our citizens in our community, continue to offer all the amenities that we currently do and are looking at at more amenities. We've, because of our department heads, Mr. Triplet, Mr. Bush, and all of our department heads, making it a priority, we were able to do that. And again, feel like we've taken care of our people who take care of us every day and in turn really takes care of the citizens here in Carrollton and provides the services and amenities that we are able to, that we're able to enjoy in Carrollton. We did that with a 0.7% increase over last year, less than 1% increase. The budget went up $375,704 over last year's budget and I'm proud that we were able to, again, do that. We've had the budget hearings, you've all been given the budget, went through it in detail at the budget retreat, as well as all the funds, the general fund, the water fund and the sanitation fund last week, or last month at the budget hearing. And now we put this before you guys tonight for hopeful approval.
Okay. All right, we've had the budget presented to us, we've discussed it, we've reviewed it. Do I have a motion to adopt it?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to adopt the budget? Is there any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, budget is approved for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024. And again, I want to say thank you to Mr. Brooks, all the department heads, to Jim and Kevin and everybody that's had input on this because I can assure you, it is not an easy task. Next item on the agenda is board appointment for the Carroll County Library Advisory Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a topic we've discussed for a couple of months now, trying to secure somebody to serve on the board and it's my understanding that Ms. Sally Cardon has agreed to serve on the library board for us and I would submit her to you for approval tonight.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the approval of Sally Cardon to the Carroll County Library Advisory Board?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The next is a board appointment for the Carroll County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Dorsey, our executive director for Convention Center and Visitors Bureau, has submitted a request. He has two vacancies coming up on the CBB. The at-large position currently held by Jackie Pate and an at-large position currently held by Beth Parsons, they expired June 30th, 2023. The board requests that during the July 2023 meeting that the mayor and council reappoint Pate and Parsons to new terms. Pate serves on the Community Foundation of West George Board of Directors, has previously been on the CBB board, has been the president and is currently the vice president. Parsons is park manager for Carroll County. Both have indicated they would be willing to continue to serve. If so appointed, then they would serve through June 30th, 2026. So we bring that to you guys tonight for approval.
Okay. We have two nominations, Jackie Pate and Beth Parsons for the Carrollton Convention and Visitors Bureau. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to appoint Jackie Pate and Beth Parsons? Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Jackie Pate and Beth Parsons will be reappointed to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The next item on the agenda is the Carroll County Board of Health.
Yes, ma'am, last one. So Mr. Howard, Mr. Lloyd Howard, he has been the city's appointment to the Carroll County Board of Health. His term is ending, but he has indicated that he would be willing to to continue to serve on the board. We come to you tonight asking you to confirm his reappointment. That would expire December 31st, 2028.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to appoint Lloyd Howard as the city's representative on the Carroll County Board of Health? I, okay, well, I was just going to say, I serve in my capacity as mayor, but we also have one other person that we can appoint, so.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to appoint Lloyd Howard as the Carroll County Board of Health member representing the city of Carrollton. Is there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries and Mr. Howard would be reappointed. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Meeting adjourned.